Well, good evening, folks. I thank you brave souls for coming to me. This is my first Board of Selectmen meeting as first selectman. Thank you very much. And thank you very, thank you. Congratulations to you as well. And, okay, I'm gonna read through the agenda quickly to make sure we're not missing anything. There's like ten, eleven items there. First item is call to order and pledge of allegiance. I do that in the cool of the agenda. We want to add another item to the agenda. Actually, two items now.
Well, no, I already have the other one on there.
That's right, you did. So, thank you, Lynda. You're very proficient. And then I had an item for another wine and beer and wine approval. Third item is approval of meeting minutes. Fourth is correspondence. We have some words from the Connecticut DOT on what's gonna happen Thanksgiving weekend or what's not gonna happen. And five is first selectman's report, which will be fairly short and sweet tonight. We have two items, appointment of the secretary. Thank you, Eric. And liaison appointments for you guys to look at. And six is public comment, first public comment of the meeting. Then move on to seven unfinished business, which includes the speeding cameras discussion and the new cell tower going in at company two on Town Street. No, I'm sorry, company one on Town Street. And eight is a new business. We've got some resignations and some new appointments to talk about, some beer and wine approvals and tax refunds. And then on to number nine, selectmen's discussion. Liaison reports again if you folks have anything to say. Eric's the only one from the previous Board of Selectmen. Then we talk about our Board of Selectmen meeting schedule. Then we go on to Christmas week. I call it Christmas week, first week in December. A lot of events going on East Adam and Mudus regarding Christmases. It's a big deal. It's great. And number 10 is another chance for public comment. And then follow, we follow that with adjournment. So, we called meeting order at seven o'clock PM tonight. Let's rise for a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have meeting minutes from our November fifth.
Approval of the agenda first.
Oh, oh, sorry. I'm skipping. I'm not used to that. Okay, may I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
As amended.
As amended.
Adding the item.
Okay, I have an AD, which is another.
So who made the first? First.
Um, then.
Second.
I second.
Eric seconds. Okay, any discussion about that? Just the item as listed. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The vote is unanimous. The record show. Okay, next is, next is approval of meeting minutes for the November fifth meeting. And what we'll do, we'll simply acknowledge the meeting minutes because two previous members of the Board of Selectmen are not here. So, and we'll just acknowledge that the minutes do exist. Thank you, Eric. And correspondence. Yes, we have some correspondence. Connecticut DOT, which I'll, I won't read the whole letter, I'll just read the body. The Connecticut Department of Transportation is announcing that there will be no inspection, maintenance, or construction activities on major highways over the 2025 Thanksgiving weekend from 6:00 AM Wednesday, November the 26th, to 6:00 AM Monday, December the 1st. Long weekend. Only work of emergency nature will be considered. Pretty straightforward. Thank you. And, okay, we have no other correspondence? I don't think so. And so now go on to item five, the first selectman's report, which is really two items. Well, one item. This is my third day as a first selectman. That's my report. And it's been interesting so far, right from rehearsing Tuesday morning. And so then, we need a secretary. And I am with Bill as secretary. And it can be a simple appointment. And I already talked to Eric. He's okay with it. Good. Thank you, Eric. Okay, item five B is liaison appointments. You have, should have in your packet, a big table of us three gentlemen on the Board of Selectmen. And Lynda and I have listed the liaison appointments. For the first selectman, it's very similar to what was done last time. And Eric as well, but we decided to balance a little better with Tom. So we gave Tom some more assignments. And you folks can look them over. If you want to make any changes, let us know. Or we can pass on them today at this, tonight at this meeting. What's your pleasure? You want to look them over? Are you okay with it? Okay, so with that being said, those are appointments. And if there's no further discussion, we don't need a vote, do we, Lynda?
No, no, you just set those as your liaison.
And have some privilege. Okay, as long as you guys agree.
As long as they're in agreement.
And thank you very much. The liaison assignments will keep you busy just themselves.
And I alter this list as I, as I need. So like if staff comes and goes or boards commission chairman change, I'll try to keep this up as, as the needs arise.
Item six is public comment.
Congratulations to the three of you. Good to see you.
Okay, then we'll go on to item seven A, which is the A test devices or speed cameras, whatever you want to call them, or license plate readers. Some people call them license plate readers. And this has been some discussion for quite a while. On the Board of Selectmen. It's a new item for me. I attended the hearing on November the 5th. And it was informative. It also raised a number of questions that I have. So I, as first selectman, am not prepared to make a recommendation tonight. But I'd like to do that at our next meeting in December. If it's answered by then, the sooner the better. And I'm gonna try real hard to do that. And then we can discuss my recommendation at that meeting, the first meeting in December, which I think is December the.
December the 3rd.
3rd, yes. So that's my target. And I have other, I'm working on other recommendations as well to kill the speeding problem that we have in town. And there's various tools we can use, and this may be one of them. Although at the hearing on November the 5th, if you attended, not many people were happy about it. I've gotten emails, phone calls since, just to make sure, and visits, just to make sure that I got that message. But we do have a speeding problem we gotta, we gotta work on. Any other comments regarding the speed cameras?
No.
Okay, thank you.
In the packets, I gave you the, the last draft ordinance that. Process.
Yeah, it's quite a bit of reading there. And it's worth, worth looking through and reading. Item seven B, cell tower discussion. I hate to sound like a deflector here, but I need more information about that too. In fact, a meeting with the attorney next Tuesday.
Tuesday, plus the cell tower company wants to come in and meet too. And then they can explain what this is all about. We did get through planning and zoning already within eight dash 24, but I think you need to be brought up to speed. In the packets, I include the coverage. I included their contract that is sitting with the attorney right now. So it's only a draft contract. It's not, you know, anything official. And I know they have some talks about that.
And this cell tower, we understand it, it's being built for cellphone transmissions, of course. But we can put our emergency management radio as well. That'll be nice. So there's lots of opportunity here. We just want to make sure we're entering into a good agreement. Okay, any other questions, comments about the cell tower?
Are we gonna push that? Next meeting or to, we need a lot more time.
I really don't know at this point. It depends on what we learn. We meet with the company.
He's gotta meet with Keith Coppins from Phoenix and then, you know, with the town attorney. So I suggest that we do the town attorney first so that if there's any bugs in the contract, he can go over it with him. But the cell tower guy's very anxious to get in here me. He wanted to come today.
So we got a lot of push on it, but we need to be careful.
Well, he's, the reason why he's in such a push is he's got potential carriers that want to go on the tower already. And he's gotta kind of keep them in a timeline so that they know what their expectations are. Yeah, well, it'd be, it'd be like a transfer station, the transfer station lease. But one of the things I want to talk to the attorney about above and beyond the contract is I've never done the cell tower thing before on the town lease property. The transfer station one was already kind of done and built and negotiated before I came on board. When I first, this was like 24 years ago. I came in at the very tail end. So I still think we have to go to town meeting and all that to do that because it's a multi-year contract. But I want the guidance from the town attorney on our process, as well as the contract.
Again, there's plenty to read there. No more discussion on the cellphone tower at company one? The next item is resignations, particularly, well, resignations and appointments, particularly for the Chatham Health District representative. And I'll just read you a short email from Irene Haynes, who was our representative. As is typical for the past many years, it's been the first select person who's been the representative. And she says, "Thank you, Russ, for the ask." He was asking, is she gonna stay on as representative? Which she could do if she wanted to, and we agreed to it, of course. But she says, "Thank you, Russ, for the ask. At this time, although I have enjoyed being a member of the Chatham Health District Board, I'm informing you that I will tender my resignation as of November the 16th, 2025, at the conclusion of my term as first selectman of the town of East Adam. It's been a pleasure to serve and work with you all." So, okay, so that takes care of that. So if you look, and Lynda did this little research. It's been, the replacement, executive summary. I'm gonna appoint myself with your approval to be the representative for the Chatham Health District. And it's a three-year term. So if, yeah, my second term as first selectman, obviously I'll fulfill the three years. If not, other things will happen. But at least recover the next two years. And the previous representatives have been Sue Mero, Brad Parker, Mark Walter, Emmett Lyman, Rob Smith, and Irene Haynes. So what I'm doing is not untypical, is rather typical. And so I'd like to hear a motion by one of you gentlemen to approve my appointment as the Chatham Health District representative. You want to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Todd Gelson as East Adam's representative to the Board of Directors of the Chatham Health District. Complete the term to December 2025.
And reappoint.
Oh, sorry. Reappoint Todd Gelson. It's an additional three-year term to December 2028.
Second.
Thank you, Eric. I didn't explain it well enough. Her term is.
Finish the Irene's term.
She did it ahead of time.
Okay.
Thank you very much for catching that. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Okay, item eight B is beer and wine approval for the Grange Hall, for the rail light. And you've got, I think, a copy of that, of that request. So, and everything's in order there. They're requesting permission for the attendees of the holiday party to bring their own beer and wine to the Grange Hall on December the 21st, 2025. May I hear a motion to approve the beer and wine service at the Grange Hall for the rail light holiday party on December 21st, 2025?
So moved.
Eric, second. Moves, and Tom seconds. Thank you. Any discussion? Think it's pretty straightforward. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is passed unanimously. Thank you. And then, next is. Okay, we'll move on to eight C. We'll talk about the other beer and wine approvals later on. Per the agenda, we'll follow the agenda as originally written before it was advised. Item eight C, Board Commission Committee changes. We've had some resignations, and one of which was Mark Henderson. And I think you've got a copy of his resignation. Yes. Lynda, as requested, please accept as correspondence as my formal letter of resignation from the town's agriculture committee. I regret having to do so, but health issues require that I step back. The committee needs to be represented by individuals capable of fully representing the town in dealing with the issues that come before the committee. Say a sincere thank you to Mark Henderson for filling that job. He did it many years. He doesn't say here, but it's gotta be about 10 years, at least. So, thank you, Mark. We will miss you. Okay, so now we're looking for new people to fill the position on the agriculture commission. And I guess we can put an item in the, can we put a notice in East Adam News?
Well, they're gonna meet at December 1st. Let's see, because I expect a couple more to come. And they have some suggestions of some other people that want to come onboard. So we can, when they become where they don't have quorum and that kind of thing, we're gonna have to do something.
Okay.
So yes, we can. But you still need a motion to accept his resignation.
So do you need a motion to accept Mark's resignation?
So, second.
Tom moves, and Eric seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is passed unanimously. All right. And, okay, another one is from Tom himself. And, Lynda, effective immediately, I resigning from the redevelopment agency. Signed, Tom Savigny. Only thank Tom for his years of service too. But he's still gonna serve as liaison. So that's, that's good. So may I hear a motion to accept Tom's resignation from the redevelopment agency?
So moved.
Eric moves. I'll second. Any discussion? It's a small group, powerful but a small group. Any discussion? There being none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, let the record show that motion was passed unanimously. Okay, thank you very much. And then we move on to, let me see, tax refunds. And as you can see by the paperwork that Lynda has provided, these are overpayments. And you're supposed to be getting the money back appropriately. May I hear a motion to approve these tax refunds?
Tom moves.
Tom moves. And may I hear a second?
Second.
Eric seconds. Any discussion? Very straightforward. After there being no more discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let the record show that the motion passed unanimously. Okay, then we're back to beer and wine approvals. I guess it's the season, isn't it? So, okay, this is from the library system, particularly at the Rathman Library. Hi, Lynda, the community, this is from Evelyn Morgan, who's the director, library director. Hi, Lynda, the community lions are having their Light Up the Holidays Act auction party on Friday, December the 5th at the Rathman from 6:00 to 8:00. They'll be serving wine and beer. Could we have a liquor permit for that evening? Thank you. May I hear a motion to approve their request for approval? So moved. Eric moves. Second. Tom seconds. Any discussion? There being none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion, let the record show that the motion passed unanimously. Okay. All right. Okay, item, that's it, right? Yeah. Item nine is selectmen's discussion. And we can start the discussion with liaison reports. If, but Eric is the only one that's got to be, give us a liaison report if you can.
I'd like to say something during that time period to talk about sustainability and what's.
Okay. Oh. Okay.
That we talked about last night at their meeting.
Yeah, I was a little confused at me telling you the truth. Who's doing what?
Okay, so sustainability team, the, the membership makeup says that, and it's part of, you know, the sustainability team guidance given by sustainable CT. It says your sustainability team must have at least three members. We have 10. They set up a committee of 10. And it said, "And one of these three must be a municipal elected official." So our selectman that was always the liaison became the member on the sustainability team as a member. Now, in the past, because, like, they, they have an email address. It says sustainability.team@eastadam.org. That's got a point to a town email address. So because of that, the selectman was always the chairman. However, Tanya does have an email address from when she was a selectman. She is currently the co-chair with Amalia. There's nothing in these rules that says she can't stay as chair. And I just tell Matt not to deactivate her email. And then they could still be chair, but you as the, as the municipal elected official need to be an actual member of that team. If everybody's good with that, you can appoint Tom as a member of the sustainability team as well as the liaison. If you're all good with that. Tanya, I talked to Tanya today, and she's happy to stay on as chairman. She just thought she couldn't. So there's nothing in there that says she can't. I just won't deactivate the email so that sustainability will point to, so she can get any emails that come to the group. So I'll need you to make some kind of motion for appointing Tom to the sustainability team under like liaison.
Okay, right, may I hear a motion? Appointing Tom Savigny as the Board of Selectmen's liaison to the sustainable.
A member.
A member, sustainable CT team.
So moved.
Okay, Eric moves. May I hear a second? Gelson seconds. Any discussion? So you're gonna be deep into it.
Yeah, I know.
All those in favor?
That's a vote.
Hey, quick.
Aye.
Aye. All right, all right.
Okay, motion. The only thing that I have for liaison, I just want to make it perfectly clear that in my time, in my experience, other committees need to reach out to their liaison. I've reached out in the past. No one's contacted me. I don't make it a habit. It's when I get that out there, I don't make it a habit to go regularly to meetings. If a chairman or the committee needs to reach me as their liaison, please do so. I will bring that issue or, or issues to the board here. But I don't make, again, I don't make it a habit of going to every meeting. So if we have issues that the first selectman is not aware of, or the Board of Selectmen is not aware of, that needs to reach out to me. You have my contact information.
That's a good point, Eric. We had the same problem with the Board of Finance. And what I found out is many, I won't say all, but many of the, of the commissions and boards that were liaisons, so don't, aren't sure what a liaison does.
Correct. That's why I'm saying that I think a lot of people are, have the misunderstanding that we show up to every meeting and we're supposed to bring every piece of information. We're not there to oversee. We're not there, we're, we're there as a mediator to come to the Board of Selectmen with any issues that maybe is not being resolved within that committee. So I just wanted to make that perfectly clear as we move forward.
That's right, Eric. Basically, communication, have an open line of communication. That's right. So you do a lot of talking and writing. But it's, it's real important and.
Especially for some of us who still have a job.
Okay. Maybe I should either visit them with the leaders or send them an email just to make sure they're onboard.
With who the liaisons are?
Yeah.
I automatically take care of that after you appoint your liaisons. You all get an email and get told to the liaison.
Would that be possible to put that one-liner in there to say, please, reach out to your liaison? Yeah, yeah, I mean, absolutely.
I think that's kind of in my pat, like, email that I send out.
I think we're all really reactive to when we receive information and we have a request to, to react to it. But if we don't necessarily make a pledge to go to every meeting, that's helpful.
That's right. I'm glad you brought that up, Eric. That's good. Okay.
One more, one more thing under the selectmen's discussion in red before you move on to eight, nine B. It's right under item number nine in red.
Yes, yeah, I, yes, I know. And it's the schedule. Oh, we had change of the time. Thank you. Yeah, okay. Yeah, I skipped over number nine. I tend to read the agenda. I should, I need to.
Cheat sheet.
I need to follow.
That's what I call it, the cheat sheet.
Need to follow Lynda's direction.
Just a cheat sheet. That's all it is.
Okay, yes, we're gonna have, there's two more meetings for the year, right?
Correct.
And they were scheduled to start at eight, well, no, one meeting, two meetings of the year. But one of them is gonna be 8:00 AM in the morning, which is, I think is better if they moved. Both meetings are at 7:00 PM. I'd like to go back to doing that. So we want to change the, if we change the meeting on December the 3rd to 7:00 PM from 8:00 AM, it needs to be a special meeting. And that shouldn't be a problem unless you guys are thinking of something else.
I understand your reasoning. I, I like the mornings every now and then just because it gave me back my evenings. But I still have to take, I had to take vacation time to get out of my job to go do these meetings. So again, it's, at the end of the day, it helps me. So it's, it's fine.
So we're good for it. Okay, so the next meeting, our next, our very next meeting on December 3rd will be a special meeting at 7:00 PM. And then for the new year, we'll talk about it in a few minutes here. Okay, shall we, yes, we need a motion for that, don't we? To make that a special meeting.
No, you could just discuss it. You don't have to, you don't have to make, you can if you feel comfortable.
Well, I feel fine at 7:00 PM. These guys are happy, I'm happy. Very good. Thank you, Lynda, for not, let me miss the red lettering. I am not, I am not colorblind. I just didn't have it turned over. Okay, well, now we've done nine A. And now we move on to nine B, which is the schedule for 2026. And we, and then in 2026, we'll have the first and third Wednesdays of the month. And the meetings will start at 7:00 PM, both of them. And we'll continue to have two public comments in our agenda. At the beginning of the meeting, at the end of the meeting.
There's only one month on that schedule. That only has one meeting. You typically don't, you know, the selectmen for years have not held a meeting in the first week of July. It's a huge vacation week.
I know that I will be gone at some point in May, but.
I'm not expecting a vote at this meeting, but we will need to have a vote in December. I'm not expecting a vote at this meeting, but we will need to have a vote at December third meeting. I just kind of put it out there for you guys to look up any big conflicts you might have.
Water main breaks, you know.
Yeah, okay. There being no other discussion, we'll vote on it at next meeting, as Linda said. Okay, our next item, let me take everything, next item is nine C. That should be in your packet as well. You can see, okay, I mean, I'm cutting short here, but it's, it's Christmas week, the first week in December. We've got Christmas in the Village on December the second, which I think is a Tuesday. Yeah, it's a Tuesday. And I'm just going to read this out loud. We can, Santa will fly into Good Street Airport. This is something we did last year, the year before as well. And the Twin Beaks Fried Chicken Food Truck will be there. Sounds good already. And we celebrate the season in our community, with our community, photos of Santa, tree lighting, treats and hot cocoa, entertainment, I'm not sure what that's going to be, and letters to drop to, to Santa. This is all in, in East Hattam Village, December the second. And then, three days later, on December the fifth, Friday, December the fifth, five thirty to eight PM, this time in Mudus, Kids Night on the Green, which also, it's on the green is the title, but it also is in our, this building here. It's quite a show, and the kids really love it. The tree lighting, in fact, I'm going to be the announcer for this event. And that's to be fun in itself. Tree lighting at six PM on Mudus Green. And Mr. and Mrs. Claus will come back to the municipal building, and we, activities, lots of activities in this building. And both these flowers you'll see on the, our website, and I hope it's a great big party. So it should be a good time. Good time for East Hattam and Mudus. And the third thing that's happening is on December the sixth, on Saturday, our East Hattam Police Department, an office of the resident state trooper, and it's going to be their annual stuff a cruiser toy drive, which they've been doing, yeah, for a long time, forty years. They've been doing it twenty years. The East Hattam Police Officers and Resident State Trooper will host our twentieth annual stuff a cruiser toy drive on Saturday, December the sixth, twenty twenty-five, from ten AM to four PM. The event will be held in the parking lot of the East Hattam Youth and Family Services Building, located at thirty-eight W. Palmer Road in Mudus. That's the old Nutmeg Building. So that sounds like a good time, too. So, okay, any other questions or comments about these events? Christmas week in East Hattam. Okay. Move on to item ten, which is our second public comment, or our only guess.
I have one via email too, that, oh, it's really short, so I'll read it for you.
Yes.
No sense printing it out. It's from a gentleman, Noel Cherubino. He's sent an email, "I am a resident of East Hattam, and I oppose the installation of speed cameras. Thank you."
Okay. What's his last name?
Cherubino, C. H. E. R. U. B. I. N. O.
I have one question on this, on the speed cameras. I've heard rumor that there is no mechanism in force in the state of Connecticut to allow anyone to collect those fines. Yes, you can put up the cameras and you can sell people tickets, and if they don't pay, you can't do anything about it.
You go to a collection agency. Yes, you can.
You can go to a collection.
Usually, if you get a ticket from an officer and you don't pay, you're a warrant, which you for your arrest. Sell your pay your plea. Bees on the other hand of a collection agency.
Okay, good question. Thank you very much. All right, there being no other public comment, and there being no other business for Forrest.
Off to adjourn.
Yes, to hear most adjournments. Eric moves, and who's the second?
Second.
Tom seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is passed. Thank you very much.